Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and staff, and council member. Today, the October 28th, at 6:00 PM, we start the work session first. Beginning the work session, there is a visitor and city inform. Is anyone, you got any form request to speak for us? No. Is anyone in the audience would like to speak? Welcome, sir. What's your name?
I hadn't got my hat on, I don't know who I am. Bob Watkins.
Oh, okay, welcome.
I lived in Halton City when I left home this morning.
Yes, sir, go ahead, sir.
You never know where you're gonna live. Well, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk about the fact that this session that we're having right now needs to be at the end of the evening. I'm gonna quit arguing about how long we talked, because I don't ever talk five minutes anyway. But there are people that are just now getting off work that cannot come up here and speak, and so it needs to be back like it was for fifty years at the end of the, at the end of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. We would try to see, we need to have the executive session maybe next time, talking about this, to see how council feeling about this one, and we will let you know, sir. Thank you. Is anyone else would like to speak? If not, I close the visitor and season forum at 6:03. The next one, I would like to invite the TAD resolution, Mr. Dan Bennett. Would you please come approach the forum and state your name, please, sir?
Yes, sir. My name is Daniel Bennett. I live in White Settlement, 408 Pemberton. Mayor Trong and council. I'm gonna be brief this evening. I have visited well over fifty entities concerning this resolution. And let's talk about why the resolution is important, how it came about. I want to be very brief. When I ran in 2017, for those of you don't know who I am, I had to visit numerous entities to ask you for your vote as a candidate. It was very cumbersome for me to do so, because all the different times, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, sometimes have five meetings in one night. Well, not only was it cumbersome, at the end of the day, the smaller entities would vote early, because some only have maybe one or two meetings a month. Some have one. So they do their due diligence, they vote, they cast their ballot, which is from October 30th to December 15th every odd year. They send their ballot off to TAD. TAD tabulates, keeps running total. The larger entities whom vote, who actually meet more than twice a month, maybe three or four times a month, they simply wait. They wait until everybody else votes, and then they cast their ballots. But in the interim, they're calling up TAD and finding out who's winning. So then they appropriate their share of votes, however they wish, to affix the board to whomever they wish, which normally is in this order. I'm gonna pass this out in this little packet I have for the council people. I copied this quickly this evening. There's somewhat out of order, but I'm gonna make the coach a representation of what I printed, hopefully. The reason the ballot nominations for 2021 are on the top, sir, under the turn, you would have them. It's because my name, my name is at the top. I'm not running. It Hasslett nominated me, and Mayor Golden, God bless him, love him, but I spoke to him about the resolution, and they sent it to my junk mail. So please scratch me off. The, the recension went out today. Now, look at page two. There's a, there's, there's a, does it say TAD? Okay, good. That's where we're gonna start. Well, the, what, the resolution itself came about because of the, of the onerous attempts to get representation on my part. It was difficult. But Mayor Newton also found out that the larger entities were affecting the election at the very end. So the resolution says we all vote from December 8th to December 15th, or December 14th, all in the same week. If you have a regularly scheduled meeting, you vote at your regular scheduled time. If you do not have a meeting that week, you call a special meeting. And you call it on Monday or Friday, doesn't matter. But we're, but now, we're all voting our conscience. That's what the resolution is supposed to do. It's supposed to make it fairer and give you time to vet candidates. You can invite them, send them questions, call them, and they don't feel that they have to pick and choose and not give the smaller entity the service they deserve. Okay. So, I, this was submitted to Jeff Law on September 27th, and I put open records request in the TAD asking if Mr. Law's gonna put this out for a vote. And it says at the very bottom, Turner Presale District has no public information response to your request. Please note that the Texas Property Code does not require the Colleyville Resolution or any resolution, it should say, to be placed on a ballot or otherwise distributed. So here's something that's going to help the smaller entities, and it's not required. So Mr. Law does nothing. Now, how's that make you feel as a small entity? It doesn't make me feel very good. Just because it's not required by law doesn't mean you shouldn't do it. Maybe? I mean, it's, give something to think about. Okay. Uh, I just wanna, that's, and I also attached the resolution at the back, which I understand Mr. Camacho said that he's already affixed Halton City's name to it. Okay, I want to talk quickly about the, the election, then I'm gonna introduce Mr. Gary Lasada. He's on, he's on the nomination this year. And he has a lot to say. He's an expert in commercial and residential property. Two of the, two of the candidates on that front list is Fagan and Glasby. Both these individuals were on the board before. I gave you a letter from '09 when Fagan first ran. What's important about 2011, when Fagan and Glasby were both on, both ran and were elected, they served 2012 and 2013. You ask, why is that important? Well, we know TAD misses properties. Ted, Ted doesn't catch new construction. Exemptions disappear. Older people said, I had one last year, this year I don't have one. It's the software. And, and Mr. Law says, there's nothing wrong with the software. It's working fine. I'm not gonna labor that point. But the people that appropriated the money and rubber stamped that software is Mr. Fagan and Mr. Glasby. They're coming for a second round. Now, if you look down the list where it says White Settlement ISD nominations, there's five nominees from White Settlement ISD. There's, there's Fagan, Malino, Potoff, Lehman, O'Donnell. These are the five people that TAD wants on their board. Who nominated these people? Mr. Randy Armstrong. He is head of residential at TAD. He's also school board president in White Settlement ISD. These are the people that TAD wants on their board. And if you go back to previous elections, wherever the nomination comes from White Settlement ISD, that's who's on the board. Now, why do they want Mr. Fagan on the board if he appropriated money for a software that doesn't work that affects your citizenry in such a disparate way? You have to ask, ask yourself that question. All right. So that's it on the resolution. I'd like to invite Mr. Lasada. He, he is a former ARB member, six years. He knows commercial, residential, frontwards and backwards. He's, he used to train ARB members when they came to TAD. That was his job. And he's, he's a wealth of knowledge. Thank you.
Go ahead, sir. Please state your name.
Yes, my name is Gary Lasada. Do you need an address or anything, or, no? Mr. Camacho, I think I send you some information. Was that distributed to the board relative to my testimony and the resume?
No, I apologize.
That's okay.
I apologize, sir, I did not.
I have some here.
Okay.
Thinking about that. I may not have the exact number, but maybe enough for...
I'll just give them to the, yeah, we have to counsel.
What you have in front of you is a resume of my background and why I'm uniquely qualified for this position. Please understand, this is not a paid position, so there's no, no, no dollars amount that could buy me or, or get me involved as far as running for this position. My name is Gary Lasada, and I'm here this evening to ask you to consider voting for me for the Chair and Appraisal District Board of Directors. On Tuesday, October 1st of this year, the city of Colleyville, by resolution, nominated me for the TAD Board of Directors. And I, I don't want to be condescending, so I need to ask an important question. Are you all aware of the difference between TAD and then Chair and Appraisal Review Board? They're two separate entities. TAD is the Board of Directors that handles the appraisal, appraiser, and, and the establishment of values. The ARB is the appeal group. And that's what I served on for six years, and I don't, I can't even begin to tell you how many thousands of hearings that I have sat in on as a chairman. I met with Mayor Newton prior to the council meeting and presented my resume and the testimony that you have in front of you. The testimony was before the Texas Senate Property Tax Reform Committee hearing held in Arlington on April 27th, 2016. I believe he was most impressed with what he read and then what we discussed. I didn't hold back on anything, nor did I hold back when I testified in front of the Texas Committee. My testimony came from serving six, six years on the Chair and Appraisal Review Board. I served as panel chair for all six years, and, and I witnessed many issues that are outlined in my testimony. I'm not part of the good old boy system. I graduated from Stanford University, and while attending Stanford, I received my master's degree, and I was taught how to think on my own. TAD's Board of Directors needs individuals on the board who know what is going on and can think on their own and introduce change. Rather than bore you with a list of self-serving comments, I'll just give you a few and ask that you read my resume and my testimony. As I told you, I do have a master's degree in, excuse me, a master's degree from Stanford University and a bachelor's degree from University of San Francisco. I lived in Arlington, Texas for over twenty years, and I now reside in South Lake where I have resided the past six years. I have owned and operated two businesses. I have served on blue chip committees for Arlington ISD. I have held positions as assistant to the city manager and assistant to the superintendent of schools. I also have worked in the corporate world as director of human resources. I have much more to tell you. The uniqueness of my candidacy is in that I have worked in city government, and I have worked in education, and I have worked in the corporate world, and I was on the ARB. I, I seriously doubt you can find any other candidate that has that kind of a, a depth and breadth as, as it relates to this position. So instead of going on and on and on, I'd really like to turn it over to you and see if you have any questions. This is a very important position. Things need to, I don't want to help. They do need to change. Let's put it that way.
I'll, I'll be happy to take questions. Mayor Trong, you have one?
Well, I tell you, I admit that I didn't know how important the TAD, you know, plus the nomination for correct people. Before that, I have no knowledge, because whatever TAD do it, our city did not have time to reveal or involve in that. So I would like to, council, you look at into the, you already listened to the presentation for most of them. You have any question, you know this, for learning purpose? Councilman Brown, go ahead, sir. Mr. Marion Hill? No?
Yes.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Yes. I, I'm a little bit confused about this. I know that at one point, we had a council member that served on TAD, right?
Mr. Mayor Everett.
Yeah.
Right?
Yes.
Yes. And we just selected him, and as far as I know, he just automatically went on it. I, I don't remember going through any election process for that.
I, I have his totals out in my truck. I'd be happy to show you all the entities that voted for Mayor Everett. That was 2011, I think. 2011, 2009.
Yeah. Well, a little bit later than that, I think, but, right?
Well, I, I have, I have, I do remember him on the ballot. And he told me in 2017, he said that was the, that was the, the worst day of his life and the best day of his life is when he got off the board. He said that, that night at that council meeting, if you go back and look at the record. And I, here's what I responded to Mayor Everett, because I understand, and I thoroughly where he was coming from. I was probably the only person in the room that, that night that did. I said, that'll be our best day when I get on the board. Because it's time for the smaller entities to be counted. And that's why, you don't, you just voted for him and thought that you just put him on there. But it required, he had, I believe he had to get over eight hundred other votes to get on that board, and there was at least eleven entities that voted for him that year.
Well, I'm thinking, I, I just don't remember going through an election cycle, other than in our own private meeting where we, as a council, selected him to be on that board.
That's probably the nomination.
And I don't remember another election.
Well, there's two, there's two, there's two things. There's a nomination period...
So we didn't have an election?
Through resolution, that you do on October, before October 15th. So if you were to nominate me, let's say, you would send TAD a resolution prior to the 15th of October, like Hasslett did, saying, Mr. Bennett, he's our, our nominee. But then, what, what Jeff Law's required doing in the state law is to assemble a ballot with all the resolution letters they got from all the different entities.
Okay.
And then that ballot goes out to sixty-four different taxing entities. And they are appropriated votes. I believe you have seventeen?
Yes.
Because your aggregate value of Halton City divided by the entire county multiplied by five thousand dictates how many votes you get. So you could actually work the math backwards and find out, of those five thousand votes, how much you represent inside Tarrant County. So you have seventeen votes. I believe Birdville has one hundred and sixty-two.
So explain how the candidates that are representing two school districts, how that happened? Or two districts?
You could be nominated by all sixty-four entities if you request a nomination from them.
Okay.
They can nominate up to five candidates. They can't nominate six, only five. Because there's only five positions to fill. So you could actually nominate five from Halton City.
And I don't believe they're required to vote, even though they nominated that candidate. The point was to get the candidate on the ballot, so all of the entities can then, in fact, vote.
I'll give you a good example. Trophy Club has zero votes. You know how many in 2017 they nominated? Five. All the current board members. So who in Trophy Club knows Mike Lehman, Mark Wood, O'Donnell, Malino, and Potoff? And they have zero votes. But they still get to nominate, because they are part of casting ballots, even though they have zero.
So the resolution that you gave us is just an example?
Okay, all right. Now, this, this is where it does get a little conflated.
Because this is Colleyville.
Totally separate. That resolution changes the way we cast our ballots for the nominees. It has nothing to do with the nominees themselves. It's just the process that we cast the ballot.
Okay.
I think you'll be casting your ballot, Mayor Trong, next, next, probably in December or in November, sometime. One of your coun, well, you may not choose not to vote. It's, it's the will of the council, is what happens. So you can, you, there's, Grapevine did not vote, Grand Prairie did not vote. I don't know why Mayor Jensen won't vote. I don't, I don't know why Mayor Tate won't vote. I've asked them both, and they've not given me an answer. Maybe they don't feel that it's important enough. I believe it's very important. Or maybe they had not gotten the representation, and they know that a vote... I had an argument with Mr. Gunderson down in Everman. He's, he's acting city manager, saying, Mr. Bennett, you're Don Quixote. I said, our seven votes are not gonna matter. I said, you do matter.
May I ask a question, Mr. Mayor, to your city attorney? Because I think he's gonna have to advise as a direction. Do you understand that we're talking about really two different votes here? One is for the resolution, and one is for the votes for me?
I think I'm following with your presentation.
Okay. I know it's a little confusing, and we don't mean to be, but we, we just feel it's so important that you understand where this is going and where it's been. So that, that's why we're asking, I'm asking for the votes. Mr. Bennett says, he's asking for you to vote on the resolution.
And, and councilperson Hillary, I, yeah, it's a very good explanation, because that resolution Colleyville passed requires six, forty-eight other entities to pass that resolution for it to become effective. And I went to over fifty-five entities, asking them to consider the resolution on its own, as it stands. Has nothing to do with the nominees. It all, all has to do with timing and when you cast your votes. Because you may do it in November. If everyone had passed that resolution, everybody would be doing it December 8th to December 14th, the very last week of the cycle. That gives candidates five weeks to address your council, ask, you can ask questions, or however you want to handle the, but it is, it is an election, it's a closed election that only school boards and municipalities get to cast their, their appropriated shares of votes. And the resolution just says, we feel it's fair for you, being a smaller entity, to do it at the last week. And Colleyville doesn't even have a meeting that week. They have to call a special meeting to cast their eighteen, eighteen votes. So you're in the same vote as, as Colleyville. They have eighteen, you have seventeen.
So you're suggesting to us tonight that we develop our resolution, and Colleyville's resolution is a template for what we might do to draft our resolution?
Well, except for where you fix your, your secretary and your mayor, whoever, city manager.
Right.
And, and of course, the header and all that.
Right.
But the verbiage and the layouts are saying, now, the, the law firm that wrote this is out of Dallas, Whit Wyatt, but it's also have been reviewed by TOASE, and White Settlement's passed it, Halton City's passed it, Lakeside has passed it. Reno was supposed to pass it, but it didn't make their agenda. Maybe they passed it by now, Mayor Hunter. And I believe there's one other entity that's already passed it. So right now, five people passed, oh, White Settlement, of course. I'm from White Settlement, they passed it. And then if you pass, you'll be sixth, the sixth entity to pass it.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I do have one other question, and this would relate to the city manager, because one of the things that I've heard, to my dismay, is that a lot of, I have spoken in front of many municipalities and school districts, and I've been told consistently that they had never received a ballot as to vote for these positions. I think that's very disconcerting, and I don't know if it came to you, Mr. Lane, or not, but...
It came to me last year.
But you haven't received anything this year?
No, sir, I haven't received anything this year.
It's very important, because they come at all different times, which in itself stacks the deck. If they were all, if the ballots all came out at the same time, and everybody had the opportunity to vote at the same time, then whoever has the most votes becomes a board member. But when it's staggered and it's mailed at different times, and sometimes not even at all, it presents a problem. So just, I'm bringing it to your attention from that standpoint, because I've heard this time and time again, way too many times.
Is the TAD election always the second week of December? Or is it, is there somewhere in their charter bylaws?
Well, the, the election itself, this is the, this is, this is how, the way it migrates. You get your nomination letter, it's supposed to be September 5th. Now, Crowley got there September 22nd. I was sitting in front of...
Well, okay, yeah, okay. The, the timing of TAD has always been a problem, because every time that we...
I won't go there.
Every time that we try to get our taxes, it's, you know, they're supposed to get to us July 26th, and it's always late. So they got a problem with their calendar. So is the, is the, my question is, is the election the second week of December?
October 15th to December. Okay. So the election is from October 30th of every odd year to December 15th of every odd year.
Okay, so the 15th is always the last.
It's always...
Because I'm just looking at the verbiage of this, and I don't like exact dates, because that means you're in a specific time period.
That's a, that's a, that's a drawback that many council people have, have made to me, yes.
Okay, so, good. Great minds think alike.
But that's, but there's a purpose here. Because, I'm gonna give you an example, and you tell me if this resolution solves this equation.
Yep.
Okay. In 2015, the Commissioners Court voted on December 7th and casted all their votes for Mr. Johnny Bennett. So Mr. Bennett, not related to Johnny Bennett, know, knowing this, passed that audio around to several taxing entities. They tabled their vote out of November into December, passed the Commissioners. And so what they did, they tabled theirs and moved it beyond them. What that does, it says in the verbiage, if you have a, a, a meeting on a specific date in your regular time and your regular day, you can't move the meeting. If you move it, your votes are forfeited. That's the genius of the resolution. If the Commissioner Court meets Tuesday morning at nine o'clock, and you meet, what is today? Tuesday?
Twenty-eighth.
Tuesday?
Monday. Monday the 28th.
Okay, Monday. All right. So you'll cast before the Commissioners Court, but the Commissioners Court's gonna have to look on your video to find out how you voted. They must vote at nine in the morning. They can't say, well, we're gonna wait till Friday. They forfeit all 562 votes.
Well, they got until the fif, okay, the 15th of December.
No. If that resolution passes, it's your regular time and your regular day. So if you have a meeting that second week...
I, I think, okay, I, I think the issue is that this resolution's non-binding on another governmental entity.
If forty-eight out of sixty-four pass the resolution, it's binding to everybody.
Is that true? Where's our lawyer? Can we force, can that be forced onto another governmental entity?
What they're trying to do is to have the rules changed. And so if you get enough of the entities that ask for the rules to change, then that will happen.
It requires a super majority of seventy-five percent. There's sixty-four entities excluding special districts who have most, asked, asked the appraiser by April 1st, so they can put forward nominees. And there's, there's other districts out there, but for everybody who doesn't do that, there's only sixty-four that have the right to vote. So seventy-five percent of sixty-four is forty-eight. If I get forty-eight entities to pass this resolution as it stands, we now change the way we cast our ballots every odd year between October 30th and December 15th.
But it's not gonna take effect this year, though?
No, sir.
Yeah. So it's gonna be for the next going on.
I'm hoping to get the statute changed in Austin. This is antiquated. It doesn't serve you, doesn't serve your citizenry, and does not serve this council.
Oh, I remember, I remember when you came before us, and, you know, I was all for you, and I, I want to say, I think I made either nomination or the second nomination.
There are, there are people looking at this now, who, see, SB two is, this is noise. A lot of people don't understand this election cycle. And I understand, because it's, it's, it's so far out there, but SB two's gone now. Now we can focus on this.
Okay. Now, just the only thing I don't like is December 8th and December 14th.
A lot of people have problems with that.
And I would say that, you know, the last day, back it up five days, you know, in that five-day period.
But remember, time shifts. That could, that could also...
Yeah, but if, if the last day is usually the verbiage, because we always have our council meetings, second and, second and fourth Mondays. And so if the, the election is on the la, you know, the, the second Friday of December, so it doesn't matter if it's the 15th or the 14th, if you just say the last voting day or the la, you know, the, 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 the drop dead date, back it up five days or four days. If it's a Friday, then goes, that takes care of that Monday, and so then you don't have to have specific dates in it.
Well, it's, it was designed for a specific reason, for the people could come in and change the vote totals at the very end.
Yeah, but if you say the last day of voting, back it up four days, then you don't have any dates, you just know whatever the last day of the vote is, and then the, you know, what is it, seventy-two hours prior or whatever?
That's right.
Then, then you know you have your week that you want, because you're looking at five days, 8th through the 14th.
If, if I might just say something, I, I don't, I don't want to step on his toes.
Go ahead, Gary.
But I think we're getting confused on two separate issues. Mr. Bennett has already indicated to you that the resolution is probably not gonna go forward this year.
Yeah.
He's begun the process...
You can't.
Yeah, there's just no way.
The timing.
So, but the key is to remember the dates for the voting and to exercise your vote as a council. That's the key thing. There's no change in the resolution or the bylaws or anything as it relates to the vote. It's still there.
Yeah, I'm, oh, I'm fine with waiting until the 14th and casting it on the last day, you know?
That's fine.
At six, at six o'clock in the evening.
It's very important, though, to not get mixed up with this.
No, I'm looking, okay, but we're asked to look at this and vote on this resolution tonight.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm looking at...
My vote's not tonight.
Yeah, no, I'm looking at the resolution, and I don't like some of the verbiage of the resolution. Thank you.
A council person, Crowley, has had one thing. What I wanna do is get a consortium of entities who wanna meet and talk to some state reps about changing the way we direct, uh, the, the comptroller to conduct this election.
Yep.
And I think your input would be great. I have a lot of other people that wanna come and put their input. I know you can't get more than three council people, because you got a quorum, or, you know, stuff like that. But, uh, it's gonna be held in White Settlement, I hope. I already got the, the water park, that is gonna be donated by the city, and I was gonna supply the barbecue. But, uh, you know, two of these directors should be elected at large. I've had that suggestion, and we, and you only elect three. That way, they have to be accountable to your residents, because the chief appraiser serves at the pleasure of the board. No matter what the chief appraiser does wrong, if the board says, hey, you're doing a great job, they give him a pay raise every year. So if you're, so they're happy. There's just a lot of people who are not.
Yep. Alright, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. I see no more question, but, uh, your presentation very good. I try for learning purpose, and, uh, I think our city need to involve in this, you know, and, because we can exercise our right from now and the future. So far, we didn't know anything about this, but thank you. This may be the third presentation from you, Mr. Bennett?
Yes, sir.
And, uh, thank you, and we try to, uh, let the council decide the resolution tonight, and I appreciate that, thank you.
We'll sit down.
Well, thank you for your consideration, your time.
Okay, at this time, uh, it's when we have the executive session, uh, no.
Dan, I had one last question I wanted to ask you.
Oh, yes, sir.
And this resolution, if we pass it, approve it, it mentioned, we do have a di- a regular scheduled meeting on December ninth.
Yes, sir.
Should we receive a ballot by then?
You should al- you should receive your ballot on the thirtieth of October.
But I mean, right, but they could have...
You're not about, you're not, if you pass it tonight, you're, you're, you're just showing support for a change of ballot. It doesn't change the way, you cast your ballot anytime between October thirtieth...
We could vote on that ballot at a later time or earlier time, anytime.
Whenever you want to. Now, White Settlement, I think they're doing it on the fourteenth.
Okay, thank you very much.
Based on their experiences.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
At this time, the council will, uh, enter the executive session at the, uh, six, uh, thirty-seven, based on the Texas Government Code five fifty-one, chapter five fifty-one point oh seven one and point oh seven two. I will be back at seven.
And this will be a regular session. Beginning of the meeting invocation and prayers of allegiance by Councilmember Susan Saul. Please stand.
Let us bow our heads. Lord, before we begin, before we ask you for anything, we just want to thank you. Thank you for your love, your mercy, your grace, your provisions and the blessings that you give us, your sacrifice and intercession that you give us every day to the Father. Lord, we just ask that you would bless this community, bless this meeting, live in the hearts and minds of our leaders that are going to be making decisions in the best interest of this community. We ask that you would continue to bless this great country. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the record which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Please be seated. Welcome everyone. My name is Ann Tron. I'm the mayor of Halton City. And I look around everybody, how happy faced, not what I'm looking for this meeting. At first, I would like to thank you all Councilmember present today. Except Council Linda Thompson on the vacation, enjoy, she don't have to sit with us. And our staff, everybody, well, by the way, during the prayer, I would like to pray for the lady have the hip replacement, friend of Council Gabe Van Zin, and hope everything go well with her. Thank you. The next item will be announcement and event by City Secretary Camacho. Yes, sir, go ahead.
This is going to be a little timely, but the public library, Storytime, Ticker Tuesdays, Imagination Station, teen programs and other library activities are all listed on libraries' websites for the dates and times, so please check the website. However, this week they have special events on the twenty-ninth. They're having the candy drive for Howling Halloween, and the Howling Halloween will be on Wednesday, October thirtieth. The Teen Halloween Bash will be Thursday, October thirty-first at four P.M. There's a costume contest involved. Pumpkin smashing will be Friday, November first at four P.M., so bring your pumpkin, and all ages are invited. The Birdville Museum will host an open house on Tuesday, October twenty-ninth, at twenty-nine, twenty nineteen, from ten to seven, and the museum is located at sixty-thirty Walker Street in Halton City. It's a free event, so come by, have refreshments and enjoy looking at the museum collection. If you have any questions, call eight-one-seven-five-four-seven-five-four-nine-eight. Colorful World Foundation will be providing free health screening services for Halton City, Halton City citizens, and particularly the elderly Asian community on Saturday, November second, from eleven-thirty to four P.M. A list of services will be provided on the city website. In addition, for fifty dollars, they will provide a comprehensive blood test, which normally would cost between a hundred and fifty to three hundred dollars. The free health screening activities include PSA screening for forty-year-olds and older gentlemen, blood pressure hypertension, fasting blood sugar for diabetes, hepatitis screening, B and C, vision screening for children and adults, social services, medical consultation, flu vaccine. The blood testing will check for red and white blood count, glucose, kidney, liver, thyroid and cholesterol. The fasting for the blood testing will need at least eight hours of fasting prior to the testing. And the community programs, the Senior Citizen Center will have their Halloween Bash from eleven, at eleven A.M. on Thursday, October thirty-first. They'll have games, refreshments and a costume contest, and it's sponsored by the Holy Savior Hospice, Legend Oaks and Woodridge Nursing and Rehab Center. Veterans Day program will be Monday, November eleventh, at eleven A.M. The guest speaker will be artillery officer, combat veteran and Bronze Star recipient, Captain Edward Carr. And it will also include a USO-style performance provided by the Silver Sisters. The annual Thanksgiving holiday dinner at the Senior Citizens will be Friday, November fifteenth, at twelve noon. You can call and make your reservations to be with city and county leaders and community volunteers as they serve a traditional Thanksgiving meal. Special guest speaker would be Judge Brent Carr, bringing a message of holiday blessings. The senior citizen friends and staff would like to thank the community for the support of their annual craft fair, silent auction, bake sale and lunch that was held two weeks ago. They sincerely appreciate the vendors, sponsors and those who attended. In Parks and Recreation, the registration is opened up for youth basketball and little ballers. Cost for girls, boys and girls ages seventeen to fourteen is sixty-five dollars, and the cost for little ballers ages four to six is forty-five dollars. The registration deadline is November thirtieth. Coaches are needed. For more information or to visit, register rather, visit the city website or stop by the rec center. Museum classes are back at the rec center, and they have a new instructor, and they're asking you to come check her out on Mondays and Wednesdays from six to seven P.M. And from, on Saturdays from eleven A.M. to twelve P.M. The cost is five dollars a class, or you can purchase a twenty-five dollar punch card. The Parks and Recreation Department is very excited as the new Halton Road Park Playground Project is close to being completed. We know everyone is excited to test it out, but it's still not ready, but please help us make sure the kids and animals stay off the playground and parking lot areas until they announce it open. They're tentatively planning a grand opening on Saturday, November ninth, so stay tuned to the city website and the Facebook for the announcements. The Keep Halton City Beautiful will be hosting an Arbor Day program at the library on Saturday, November second, at ten A.M. You can join us for entertainment, refreshments from the garden club and giveaways. Alta Vista Nursery has also donated a limited supply of tree seedlings that they'll be handing out while the supplies last. Help us to thank our veterans on November eleventh, at eleven A.M. at the Veterans Memorial for a very special Veterans Day ceremony. The Halton High School Jazz Band, Fire Department, pipe and drums, and several, several speakers will be honoring our veterans. The Veterans Memorial Brick Fund Raise is about to close. Your final chance to get a brick ends on November fifteenth. Your final chance to get a brick ends on November fifteenth. The order will be placed shortly after, and they anticipate the installment of the bricks to begin after the new year. We will hold a special short, they will hold a special ceremony to unveil the Walk of Freedom where engraved bricks, bricks will be placed. Special invitations will go out to anyone that ordered a brick, and to order it, you might, and be a part of this city, be a part of this very special project, please visit www.brixrs.com/donorsite/haltoncity, or you can stop by the rec center and fill out a form. Four-by-eight bricks are forty dollars, and eight-by-eight bricks are a hundred. The Halton City Police Department has been nominated for a grant to utilize their K-9 expenses, and can acquire this funding through this process. First, go to www.aftmath.com/K9grant. You click on the region your K-9 is located, find the photo, click on the picture to see the full-size photo, and then click vote. Enter your first and last name with your email address and select the recapture box, which allows you to vote every twenty-four hours. You can click vote and share your vote via social media, and this ends November third. Early voting will continue over at the Northeast Center until Friday, November seventh, excuse me, November first, at seven P.M., and Election Day is seven to seven on November fifth, Tuesday. And that's our announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Camacho. The next item will be presentation. At first, I would like to invite the Deputy Chief, Dr. Knapp, and our City Manager, Keith Lane, make a presentation for long-term employee service award. Welcome, sir.
Mr. Mayor and Council, it's our privilege tonight to honor Battalion Chief Randy Harris. If he would come forward. Randy has completed twenty-five years of service for the City of Halton City. And I believe, Randy, who do you have here with you tonight?
I've got my wife, Mammy, my mom and dad, Jimmy and Mary Harris, and my little brother, Derek.
Very good. Randy comes, he started in ninety, nineteen ninety-four, after coming from Azle, so he's got thirty, thirty-one years as a, as a fire service, in the fire service, so proud to work. He's now working as our Training Chief upstairs, and, and all the things that are entailed under that, so. Yeah, it's, it's all good. So Randy, on behalf of the city, I appreciate your work.
Yes, sir, Mayor. Mayor and Council, I think this is the fourth one that I've had the honor of doing that represents part of our employee culture that we have, which is to first look inside the organization for any transfers, promotions, or appointments. Back in two thousand sixteen, I had the opportunity to promote and pick my successor as police chief, which I think the easy way out would be to pick somebody that would make me look really good, which, which that went through my mind, but the guy I selected, I had the, the honor to work with for the time I was chief, and I saw him go from corporal to sergeant to captain, and take over division command and do just an absolutely amazing job, and one of the things I asked him to do as a condition of him becoming police chief was to get his degree, and he will graduate in December with his bachelor's degree. So I'm very proud of this guy. I'm sure that there was nobody that would come with him, so he's got nobody to introduce, but I'd like to present a twenty-year service award to Chief Cody Phillips.
I was just picked to make sure that he continued to lose his hair.
You want to lose your hair, then become a city manager. The next recognition came from Council Gabe Enzen. She would tell you about the story of this one. You want to present this certificate for the person. Go ahead, anywhere you want, here or down there.
We just wanted to say thank you to Bethany Morris. I am grateful today because, as our city manager Keith Lane mentioned, it's in the culture, one of the first things I learned at a meeting here was that we should recognize those who do good service. And Bethany, we're just so grateful. We know that it's your job, but we also know that you spent time outside of what you get paid for, you spent resources outside of what you're paid for, and we are so grateful to you for returning a cat that was lost for two years to the rightful owner named Indy, and we just want you to know that in Halton City, we appreciate good work. We all like to be appreciated, right? So tonight, Bethany, this is in recognition of the service of Bethany Morris, Halton City Animal Services Officer. Whereas Halton City Animal Services Department provides its service to the community concerning the enforcement of ordinances and laws regarding animals in the city, but also aids citizens who unfortunately suffer the disappearance of their family pets. And whereas Ms. Bethany Morris, Animal Services Officer, recently picked up a stray cat through a citizen's report and brought it back to the animal services facility. And whereas Ms. Morris scanned the microchip in the cat's ear and discovered it was owned by Barbara DeRosa, but had been missing for two years. And whereas Ms. Morris was able to contact Ms. DeRosa and unite the happy honor with her lifelong pet Indy. Now therefore, I, this is him, Dr. An Trung, Mayor of the City of Halton City, Texas, and on behalf of the Halton City Council, and all the citizens, wish to publicly recognize and thank Animal Services Officer Bethany Morris for her distinguished service in returning a long-lost pet to their owner and family. I hate pictures. That was for you.
Don't cry. You know, a next proclamation. At first, let us say this. Our Halton City, we have a lot of senior season and a lot of people below the wealthy lie, so this organization called Colorful World Foundation will help them a lot. This is a group of Asian and, you know, medical staff include doctor, dentist, everybody, you know, practitioner nerd coming here, you know, once in a while you see at the fire station on November second, that's mean next week, you will see at the library in Halton City, and they will do all kind of service for free, right? No charge. Make sure I pronounce right, so later on you send me a bill, I can pay, by the way. At this moment, I would like to invite Ms. Sophie Trin and her staff from the Colorful World Foundation approach this podium, please. Thank you. You know, Sophie Trin, the one on the maroon suit, actually, her husband, he medical doctor, and I have known them for many, many years, over twenty-some years. And as a doctor, he particular, a, a good doctor, like a patient coming there, they don't have enough money. He can give him big discount or sometimes free. That kind of the heart you hardly to find in America, because most of the time when they come in, copay money, thirty-five dollars, you don't pay that, they no service. But in Asian community, we have a lot of our heart, you know, open for the community, you know, just like dentist, and thank you so much. At this moment, I would like, Ms. Sophie Trin, come in here, please. She called me uncle. Her husband called me brother. Well, I don't know. This is a Office of the Mayor, City, Halton City, Texas, proclamation in honor of service of Sophie Trin, and Colorful World Foundation does include you. Whereas it's a joyful occasion when Halton City have the opportunity to honor a business for, in outstanding service of Halton City citizens, and whereas Mrs. Sophie Trin and a staff of Colorful World Foundation have now put forth this commitment to the physical and mental welfare of Halton City citizen, particularly the elderly, by providing free healthcare, screening, testing, vaccines, and low-cost blood analysis to be held at Halton City Library on Saturday, November two, two thousand nineteen, and whereas Halton City is extremely grateful for Ms. Trin and her organization for providing such a vital service for the citizens of Halton City. Now therefore, I, An Trung, Mayor of Halton City, Texas, and on behalf of the City, Halton City Council, and all the citizens, wish to proclaim our thanks to Sophie Trin and all the staff of Colorful World Foundation to their commitment and service to the Halton City community. And side by me, An Trung, your uncle, okay? Come in here, yes. Thank you so much. You have something to say? Go ahead, don't be shy. Just like karaoke, you have to look at this.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Thank you very much for having me here today, along with my organization, Colorful World We maybe knew we started in two thousand, two thousand sixteen, but we moved quite fast. From September seventh to October twenty-seventh, which is this past Sunday, we had seventeen health screening throughout DFW, and all of them are pretty much free. We provide free screening for diabetes, fasting blood sugar, H A one C, blood pressure, hepatitis B and C, cholesterol, free consultations and visions, and our social services team is also available. We all, this year, we thought we won't have enough flu shot to come for Halton City on, on the Saturday, but we will be having flu shots, which are for free too. We also provide a, a package, just like a complete lab panel for fifty dollars, because obviously we don't have enough money to do that for everyone. So what we do is we provide for, we test for thyroid, diabetes, cholesterol, blood, complete blood work, complete blood count, you name it, the liver, the thyroid, the kidney, and all these things. So these, we only charge fifty dollars really to help those people who doesn't have insurance. We sent, we usually send them the, the lab result along with a report and then what they have, you know, and for those who doesn't have insurance, they can call our office to make an appointment, be seen by me or my husband, another provider, for only twenty-five dollar. That's the best we can do at this time, unfortunately, with our low funding, so I hope that we can continue to provide for the City of Halton, Halton City in the future. And everything we do is, is still very much for free. We don't charge anyone, and definitely not the city. It doesn't hurt, the city can do any of some, but, but no, that's not what we're asking. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sophie. One more time, thank you all of you here today for the presentation. And the next item will be a monthly financial report. Ms. Silona, go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. It's hard to believe we've just completed another year, so the end of September is the end of our fiscal year, and so the numbers you see tonight, just keep in mind, these are unaudited numbers, so you'll hear even more about the month of September whenever auditors come visit you guys in about March of this next year. And looking at the total fund summary of how we finished the eighteen, nineteen year, we received a hundred and two percent of the revenues that were budgeted, and we spent sixty-eight percent of the total expenditures that were budgeted. That does fall below normal, and that part of that reason is because of the CIP projects that carry into the following year that may not have been completed. On the general fund side, still looks favorable, where we had a hundred percent of revenue collections, and we spent ninety-one percent of budgeted expenses. And the property tax, we, the total property tax collected was actually a hundred and four percent of what was budgeted, so we did exceed that amount. Same thing on the sales tax side, and I always like this slide a little bit more where you can see the trends, even though we had a reduction in August, we were back up twelve percent in the month of September. This gives you an idea of how we compared our neighbors on the sales tax side. And that's all I have for the September financials. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Council, you have any question? You did a good job, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
And the next one, Chief Cody will present a two thousand nineteen crime statistic, full quarter report. Go ahead, Chief.
Evening, Mayor, City Council. This is a two thousand nineteen, end-of-year, fourth-quarter stats. We changed them to mirror the fiscal year to more accurately, give you a more accurate representation of the crime stats through the fiscal year. The first one's going to show you the total calls for service compared to the third quarter to the fourth quarter, and then year-to-date comparisons. As you can see, we're slightly lower on the calls for service from quarter-to-quarter, and then seven percent down from year-to-year. Part one offenses are going to be broken down separately. This just gives you an overview of what the total part one offenses were between third and fourth quarter. It was a ten percent increase, but only of a difference of about fifty-six offenses within that time period. Year-to-date comparison was slightly up. It was twelve percent, and that's a, accounts for a two hundred and ninety-five report difference between the two. Part one murders, we had one that was in District Five up north, that was a con did murder up there. Again, he was, he was arrested in North Carolina, and the guys in the U.S. Marshal Service, they did amazing work to get that, make sure that was wrapped up fairly quickly, and that was one of the first, is actually the only homicide that required a out-of-state. I guess we had to fly people to North Carolina to interview them, as well as arrange for the vehicle that was stolen in that to be transferred back, so AA actually drove to North Carolina and back to get that, so kudos to them as well. So here's the part one offenses, broke down the rapes. This consists of twenty-two percent decline between third and fourth quarter, but we had a thirty-nine percent increase from year-to-year. If you remember, in the first quarter of this year... If you remember, in the first quarter of this year, we had the schools start, and they started a new program, which accounted for a bunch of the increases of outcries from victims of sexual assault. Out of all these, we had two stranger sexual assaults. One was arrested, and one ended up being unfounded. It was an individual with a mental disorder that made a false accusations, what occurred on that one. Robberies, third to fourth quarter, were down 14% as one offense. And then from year-to-year, 8% decrease from 40 to 37. Aggravated assaults were up 28%, which accounts for a difference of five. All of, through the district, from third to fourth quarter and for the year, there was only two unknown offenders. One was a road rage, where a gun was shot at a vehicle, and then a second one, a gun was fired at another vehicle, and the window was shattered in that one. So that would, the 23% decrease, a difference of 20 on that one. Burglary of a building from fourth quarter compared to third quarter was up 41%. Seventeen to 24 was only a difference of seven. And for the year, we were down 6%, a difference of four. Out of these, we've, one arrest resulted into two people, accounted for one offense. We arrested another individual in District 4, which is the northwestern part of the town, that was responsible for numerous burglaries up there. And then we also had one that was down south, mainly in District 2 and District 1 off the 121 corridor, that was breaking into businesses in our city and surrounding cities, and he got, is responsible for numerous burglaries in our city down there. Burden of a residence is down 10%. And then amazingly, we're even compared year-to-year. This is still one of the things that's, I find amusing about stats, is you can go back years, and it's pretty consistent all the way through. Our theft offenses are down 1% from third to fourth quarter, and down 11% year-to-date for the fiscal year. That was a difference of 81. Burglary of motor vehicles were up 8% for a difference of seven between the quarters, and then up 12% for a difference of 33 for comparison of years. The District 4, as you can see, the districts are broke down into different offenses. District 4, we've made three arrests, and that district was, you know, with individuals involved with the burglary of motor vehicles. District 2, we had two arrests, District 1, one arrest, and District 3, one arrest. And when arrest comes for a burglary of motor vehicle, they're usually responsible for more than just one of the BMVs, burglary of motor vehicle. They're usually responsible for numerous that occur in a certain period of time. Vehicle thefts were up 13% from quarter-to-quarter, and up 10% for the year-to-date. That's a difference of 20. Out of those, we've made 11 arrests, and out of those, 23 of the cases that were submitted or reported stolen were forwarded to the Tarrant County Auto Theft Task Force that we have a detective assigned to. Most stolen vehicles during this year were Ford vehicles, Ford cars, Dodge pickup trucks, and then motorcycles. And the motorcycles were the ones that were getting hit in all the apartment complexes up in District 4. Our arrests compared to last quarter were down 5%, and then 13% year-to-date for a difference of about 136. Any questions on the police side of it? I still have two more things to go, Mayor.
Hey, Chief, on the BMVs, and I guess on the auto thefts, are those basically door pullers, just seeing, looking for open vehicles?
There's, it's a mixture. They're, the main source is open doors, you know, unlocked doors.
Yeah.
And there's been a couple where they busted windows out as well.
Okay, so they're actually working.
Or more than a couple, but, you know, they still, they still, we've caught a couple of those people that were arrested, still had the old spark plugs that were broken up and cracking windows that way.
Okay, thank you, sir.
A couple of them, that's it.
So just to clarify, on the rape comparison, at 39% up, those aren't current, those weren't current assaults, those were reported from previous things by the school, is that what you said?
No, ma'am, the difference, the increase, the difference of the 18, a bunch of the, a bunch of those can be attributed to the increase because of the program the school put on at the first of the year, that it created a lot of outcries from children.
Okay. But those weren't necessarily in this year?
Yes, that was from October. These are, that was reported from October 1st of this year until September 30th of this year.
All right, thank you, and thanks for a good job.
Yeah, I think, I think what she's trying to find out is the occurrence. The occurrence could have happened in a 10-year span, and they were just, they made, they made the outcry after they attended that class.
Correct.
Yep.
Any more question from Council? Thank you, Chief.
Code enforcement side. So during this fiscal year, we've basically held one vacant code enforcement position. We've currently extended a job offer for an individual coming from Dallas. She's going to be a great asset to the city if she accepts, so hopefully that'll be filled fairly quickly. So code enforcement year-to-date comparisons, as you can see, the new cases were up 21% for a difference of about 698 cases. Abated violations, which means they were taken care of, were up 17% for a difference of about 553 violations, and inspections were down 11%, accounting for about 1,975 inspections. So some of the top six categories that y'all deemed important, y'all wanted information about are listed here. Brush accounted for 143% increase, which is an increase of about 240 violations. High grass accounted for a 90% increase, which is 437 violations. JTD stands for drunk, trash, and debris. It was down 15%, or down 140 violations. Junk vehicle were up 18%, 35 violations. Parking was down 29% for 145 violations, and then zoning was down 9%, counting for 13 violations. Year-to-date comparison on warrants and citations. Warrants served were up 141% for 38 issued warrants, and citations were up 10% for 179 citations. Leans filed by code enforcement fell. And then y'all see, Councilwoman Van Zan asked for information at the last council meeting. I provided y'all with a couple of documents that answered a bunch of her questions about that as well. I'm open for any questions about code enforcement.
Any question, Council? See none, thank you, Chief. Oh, Ms. Brown, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief Phillips. Will you elaborate a little bit on zoning, the code enforcement, on the zoning? What does that really encompass?
Well, zoning, it's anything that basically comes out of Glenna's office. So there, Glenna is actually now, has Darla assigned to her. So Darla deals with all the business, the commercial side of the, the business, commercial side of the code enforcement stuff. So zoning can be anything related to signage, those flag waving out in front of the street, anything that comes out of ZBA that they're granted a variance on, that they're in violation of, that they'll send code enforcement out to give a notice or stop work orders or anything like that.
Could it even be a business being run in the wrong zoning category?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. If there's anything wrong, you throw it.
Any more question? No, thank you, Chief.
One more.
Appreciate, one more?
One more.
I forget about this all the time.
This one is Haltam City Animal Services. This one is a year-to-date comparison for dogs. And the adopted rate was down 21%, accounting for 33 animals. Returned rate was down 17%, accounting for 30 animals. Euthanasia rate on dogs were down 16%, accounting for 27 animals. The rescued rate was down 42%, accounting for 10 animals, and the total intake for the year was down 31%, accounting for 158 animals. Feral cats, the euthanasia rate and total intake were down 26%, accounting for 17 animals. Tame cats, I'm sure I'm on our screen, the adoption rate was down 23%, accounting for 16 animals. Returned rate was down 36%, accounting for four animals. The euthanasia rate was up 79%, accounting for 23 animals. Rescued rate was down 51%, accounting for 18 animals, and the total intake for the year was down 11%, accounting for 17 animals. The calls for service for animal control were down 27%, accounting about 462 calls for service. No more free questions?
Any more?
No, that's it.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Just my inexperience with this whole process, why would you euthanize tame cats?
We only euthanize for sick, injured, ill, or aggressive animals. So it could be anything from an aggressive animal to something that was hit or appears sick.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any more question for Chief Coley? No, thank you, Chief. Good job. Now we go to the consent agenda. Item number three, four, five, unless you have question of any of this item. If not, go ahead. Three item ready for motion. Council, water grow.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we approve the consent agenda of items, agenda items three, four, and five.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Council, please.
Just for a second.
Okay, if you have no, any more question or comment, go ahead, reassure your vote, please. Order consent item unanimous approve, thank you. Now we go to regular agenda, number six, exchange agreement. Ms. Austin, our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. We've been discussing this with the Council for several months now. As you will recall, Birdville Independent School District is in the process of trying to develop a new elementary school on the east side of Big fossil Creek. And in connection with that, they're going to have a pedestrian bridge. And we had originally entered into discussions with them to try to work out an arrangement where they could lease some city-owned property, an EDC-owned property on the, on the west side of Big fossil Creek, where they would have parking lot and the bridge entrance. But due to a number of issues that came up during that negotiation process, it was determined that it made more sense to convey that property to the district for them to own and operate so that the city wouldn't have any responsibility in connection with that. And we discussed with them doing an exchange of property for some, some property that's currently being used by the city for soccer fields over on Hires Lane. So we've worked out an exchange agreement now for the city and the BISD to exchange these two properties. The school district property is actually more valuable than the city property, but we have worked out and negotiated an arrangement with them to do an even exchange of these properties. The Haltam City Economic Development Corporation has already conveyed the properties that it owns to the city. And if we go forward with this exchange agreement, then the city would convey the property that is needed for the pedestrian bridge to the school district in exchange for the school district conveying to the city, the Hires Lane property. So the city would then own the approximate 3.9 acres on Hires Lane, which would be subject to a lease agreement that we're going to talk about as the next item on the agenda. And if you'd like for me to address that now, I can. Okay. So the property that the school district would be conveying to the city, the 3.9 acres on Hires Lane is, is currently being utilized for football practices and other recreational activities with Haltam Middle School. And the school anticipates that for the next three years, they will need to utilize that property for those activities for the period of August through November. So we have drafted a lease agreement that would allow them to utilize the property that is being conveyed to the city for that short period of time during the next three years. That would be August through November of this year, next year, and the year 2021. So it's a nominal value that they're paying for the lease during the period that they are leasing the property. The city can still use it for soccer or other purposes, but the school district would have priority to use it for their, their middle school football practices or any other curriculum that they need that property for during that period of time. Outside of those time periods of August through November, then the city, of course, owns the property and can use it for whatever recreational purposes it deems appropriate. So what you have before you on these two items, item number six and item number seven, would provide for an exchange of the property, where the city would then become the owner of the property on Hires Lane. And then we would lease it to the school district for, for three years for them to continue to utilize it for football practice and the like. I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have them.
We have no question, you done a good job too. And we can put two item in one motion or separate motion?
I think your city secretary would like separate motions, so.
Yeah, there's two signatures, different signatures.
Well, you're the boss, right?
Yeah. It's just convenient for him, so yeah, why don't we take item six, and then we'll do seven after that?
Suggestion by the secretary, we will take action, item number six first, and this ready for motion, and Council grow.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we approve the exchange agreement with Birdville Independent School District.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, that would be for a second.
We got the second, please reassure your vote if you have no comment. Unanimous approve, item number six. Now we go to number seven for ready for motion. Council, so.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the lease agreement.
Thank you, ma'am.
With Birdville Independent School District.
I'm sorry. Second, Ms. Gabe Enzen.
Thank you, yes, Mayor, that is for a second.
Yeah, we got the second, so please reassure your vote if you have no question or comment.
Okay, you're gonna have to raise your hand on this one.
Okay, raise your hand.
Passed.
Unanimous passed. And the last item on regular agenda, in number eight, TAD resolution. You already heard the Mr. Bennett and Losada make a presentation, and at this time, this item ready for motion. Mr. Water grow.
Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna ask that this be tabled until next council meeting, so we can get the date thing. We do definitely gonna have this thing come up, and, and I fully support what Mr. Bennett is trying to do here. And I looked at the calendar, and the 9th of December is our regularly scheduled meeting, and so hopefully we have the ballot from TAD, and so then we'll vote at that point in time, and so that.
Go ahead.
Daniel J. Bennett, White Settlement, Texas, 408 Pemberton. Councilman Hillard pointed something out, and I wasn't gonna point it out to his council because it wasn't really part of the discussion, but in, because she, I went and got the vote totals for Mayor Everett in 2011. And she goes, "Well, we voted for him, and we're not listed." Well, I knew that. In 2015, Crowley voted, and they were not listed. So what I want to hand is, someone, secretary, somebody in the audience made this copy, I'm gonna give it to Ms. Hillard, but also want to attach, and this is the importance of this resolution, it condenses the voting cycle where everybody can be counted. So Haltam City cast their votes in 2011 for Mayor Everett, and here is TAD spreadsheet, and you're not representing. And here is TAD spreadsheet and you're not represented. Your seventeen votes and the votes of your citizens were not counted in twenty-eleven. And, uh, and, and I'm gonna add this too, and you can probably hand this out. But this is an open record request asking TAD about their policy and procedures of recording votes. And they have no written policy or procedures. That, this request was prompted the fact that you in twenty-eleven were not counted and Crowley in twenty-fifteen were not counted. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Manette. And, uh, Councilman Watergro want to table this one, uh, Castle, everybody okay with this? Okay, we need a second? Okay, we got a second, uh, everybody Rashad, you vote by hand and now, or what? No, we, we can do electronic here. Okay, item number, yeah, number seven will be table and unanimous approve. Now we, uh, city staff report, you have anything? No? How about future agenda item? Any council want anything for the next one? Which one?
Rex, did you want to comment on the workshop for the code enforcement? And then Greg is going to comment on the work session for the local pavement management.
I think that as far as the, the work session for the code enforcement, that's, I mean, that's not my department, but I'd be more than happy to comment on it. I, I know that they're working on that, Mayor. When do you think, next council meeting, you'll know where you are on that or? Just tell them.
You, you're not ready yet?
He, he'll be ready whenever you want him to be up here with it, so.
Castle?
If y'all have a date that you want to do the work session for code enforcement, let us know, we'll do it.
Okay.
But it's gonna be a workshop, not a work session, so.
Yes, sir, workshop, okay, thank you. We'll get it, we'll get it scheduled and get it out. Okay, thank you. Any resignation of board commission and committee members? Any resignation, anybody resign? I saw Greg, you raise your hand? You want to resign or what? I'm sorry.
If only it was that easy, no. I think there was another item, it was to schedule a workshop or a work session on, uh, pavement management on that last agenda item. I'm thinking, I don't know that you want to hear me talk for an hour, but can probably say what needs to be said in probably twenty, thirty minutes, so we could probably do it on a work session? Or do you think more time's warranted? So if council, one of two things, if you're gonna have a code enforcement workshop, maybe we combine the two. Otherwise, I would suggest the first meeting in December, that work session for, uh, to discuss pavement management programs.
I think if you, uh, we have another workshop and you just add on like thirty minutes or something, we can combine together, what Castle thinks, okay? Okay, we with it.
Well, his idea about, um, the workshop for code and for the pavement management together would be an hour total, right? Thirty minutes for each so, each topic, that would work with, that'd give us just one meeting.
I have no idea how long Chief Phillips intends to talk, whether it's three hours or four hours.
It'll be little, right?
Yeah. Council Brown? I'm sorry.
Are you wanting to do it in a work session, a normal work session in our next meet, uh, council meeting?
Can I interject real quick? The last time we had a workshop back in December, it lasted. Oh, yeah. It was, it was definitely more than an hour once everybody become passionate about their, their topic of choice. So it become definitely, it would take more than an hour.
See, he knows me very well.
Yeah, we shut up meeting, okay. Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Okay, we are, uh, any resignation, uh, Councilman Gro.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. On this, I hope this is the right time to bring it up, uh, but going through this board and commission quarterly report, I guess I was looking through here and like, are we having a problem? Like, maybe Ms. Bachelor can add to a problem having a quorum at any, the ZBA or the, uh, P and Z or, because I was noticing that we don't have any alternates at ZBA and I really, there's, I guess, an alternate member that's been absent quite some, by looking through here quite some time.
That's correct, my ZBA is set up of eight regular members and one alternate. And my alternate has been absentee for this quarter. So it's really hard for me to get a quorum of six people when you have eight regular members and no alternate to pull from.
So, y'all, the one particular alternate, I think, since, uh, August, I, I don't see where that person has even attended a meeting.
Correct.
So what can we do to help you, Ms. Bachelor, what?
Do you think we need to add more alternate, uh, people there?
Replace this alternate or?
Um, that's up to, that would be Ms., uh, Dr. Trong's appointment as far as the alternate. Um, if we change the alternate numbers, that would be an ordinance change.
Okay, so maybe replace this alternate that I keep seeing is absent?
If that's what Dr. Trong wants to do, since it's, it's appointment.
I'll get with Dr. Trong.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bachelor.
Appreciate that.
But do we? For instance, um, one regular has missed just as often pretty much, I think, as the alternate. But we know what's happening with him and now he's, uh, getting his health back and coming back. So I don't know what is happening with the alternate, whether he's in a same position as that.
There's, uh, no response whenever we, um, email or text to, to see if he's gonna be present. I know his job requires quite a bit of travel, but there's been no communication.
Okay, well, that answers that.
I, I think it's important, if you don't have enough quorum for ZBA or, for example, P and Z, you need to tell Mr. Camacho, and Mr. Camacho need to contact with the council member who appoint that lady, lady or gentleman. If they keep missing like this, based on the on and I believe, and, uh, we can remove them. And right now we have about fifty, sixty people lie up to search. And, uh, just like Councilman Brown say, we still have problem. Why not bring more alternate sitting there, you know? And after they do a good job and another one keep missing, just ask them to resign or something like that. So what, what do you think, Castle? Yeah, the P and Z, yeah. That, that, uh, two more, I heard the problem all the time and we need to fix that. Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir? Thank you.
Yes, and then, um, as council liaison, I was looking at that same issue today. And I noticed that if you look through the applications that we have on file in our booklet, there's one person that looks particularly suited for ZBA and P and Z.
Thank you. Okay, uh, we don't have any more appointment than the last one, I believe, the accused absent of council member. I know Mr. Lynn Thompson, he traveled out of state. She didn't ask me to do it, but, uh, she told me she on vacation, so I need to council approve for absent.
Who is it, Bren Wees?
Go ahead, Ms. Wees.
Make a motion, we approve Councilwoman's, uh, Thompson's absent tonight.
Yes, go ahead, Rashad, you vote.
Thank you, Mayor, that's be for a second.
Okay, we got second and. Ms. Brown? Unanimous approve for, uh, Council Thompson on vacation, thank you. And at this time, we have no executive session. And I will join the meeting at exactly eight o'clock, thank you.